Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our candidate forum for the vacancy in the Bloomington Common Council District 5. My name is David Henry. On behalf of the Monroe County Democratic Party, welcome. Before we get started, I wanted to share some notes and ground rules for our caucus forum today as we introduce candidates that are seeking to fill the vacancy in Council District 5. First, I want to thank local media with B Square and IDS Media for covering our forum today, and we are broadcasting on Facebook Live for folks that are watching on social How we found ourselves here, I think, is important to cover as we're working through the beginning of a new term and a new administration on city council. Many of us are from other states. I'm looking across the room, and I know some of us moved to Bloomington and Monroe County from elsewhere in the course of our lives. And in Indiana, there's no provision for a special election where we return voters to the ballot box to fill vacancies of this kind. Under Indiana code, it falls to the party who nominated the person that vacates the seat to fill that seat for the remainder of the term. And while it's fairly commonplace in our county government to do such a thing, it is not as common in our city council or mayorship here in Bloomington. So what we have here is a rare occurrence. It doesn't happen very often, but members of council over the years like Jim Sims and Susan Sandberg, in more recent memory, and Dave Ralho all found their way to council primarily through an office vacancy caucus over the years. So what's happening in our community in the next few weeks to fill the vacancy is a process of the party under state code. And so in that structure, your neighborhood elected and appointed precinct committee persons of the party will be your representatives in a caucus that will gather a week from today, March 2 at 1:00 at Bloomington City Council Chambers to appoint for a time or pro tempore your county council, or sorry, city council person in District 5. What does that mean for you? It means that those are your representatives, and over the next week, if you want to reach out to your precinct committee persons and talk to them about their vote in that caucus, you should. They were duly elected at the ballot box, most of them, in May of 2022. And if you're interested in being involved in these processes in our community and getting involved in the legislative caucus of your Democratic Party, I encourage you to keep in your calendars, May of 2026, when we go back to the ballot box to elect our precinct committee persons who will guide our party over the next four years when we go back to the ballot box. So this is, in short, the way we do it in Indiana. It's outlined in the code and the state party rules as we move forward on how we fill these seats. For more information on all of that, I encourage you to go to our party's website at monroedems.org to learn more about the precinct committee, how it works, and who your precinct committee persons are. And we're also happy to get the contact information to you so you can discuss their vote the next week with them as they make their deliberations. Thank you on behalf of the party. And with that, we'll go ahead and get into our candidate forum for District 5. I want to thank those that have decided to stand in caucus for the vacancy, and those include Jason Moore, Courtney Daly, and Jenny Stevens. Our format this afternoon will go a little like this. We will have opening statements from the three candidates for about four minutes each, and then I will moderate questions that have been turned in on these lovely question cards at the door. So if you go ahead and fill those out and drop them out in the box, or I'll gather them, we will sort them into categories with preference for the District 5 residents and precinct committee persons first. Those topics today will include housing affordability and attainment, public safety and first responders, sustainability and infrastructure, civil liberties, budget and government operations, and other things that were on those cards. Each candidate will be afforded 90 seconds to answer each of those questions, and we'll work through the list as much as we can in the next hour and then conclude our forum today. With that, I will go ahead and open up our candidate forum for opening statements, and I'd like to recognize Jason Moore to start us off. Jason.
Great, thank you. First off, thank you all for being here. It's a Saturday, and I know what that means. But I would just like to briefly introduce, my name is Jason Moore. As you may have known me as the Fire Chief, but that's not all I am. And for me, I think what's the most important thing for you to understand is why. I grew up in the military. My parents were both veterans. I was a veteran. I've moved all over the place. I've been out in the world, and for the first time in my entire life, I've found a place that I didn't want to leave. And I think that's what's important. I got to know this community very intimately, very deeply, through my work with the city, but also just being engaged, being with the Boy Scouts with my kids, being out there with, you know, the 4-H programs, just getting out in the community. It made me realize that, for the first time, that I actually love a place, and I'm going to call it home. And I think you need to understand, for someone that's been in the military transient always, it came down to that I'm loved, I'm welcomed, my family loves it here. And I think the other thing you need to understand is, I came from a career that is very much an entire-centric lifestyle. For 23 years, I've loved that job. And what is important for you to understand is, I actually love this place more than I love that job. And that, I could have gone anywhere. I could have put out with the things that we've done here in Bloomington as a Fire Chief, I could have gone anywhere. Family would have supported it, but the more we talked about, well, pulling the kids out of school, which we love, you know, leaving the group of friends that, you know, are nice enough that if we're sick, they bring ice cream to the house or soup, that's not something I've experienced in a lot of places I've lived. So moving forward, I want you to first understand why, which is that I love this community. I may not be the person that's lived here the longest, but I promise you that I'm somebody that has dug in very deep here because I do love it. When you think about what we're going to be talking about and what the work at council is, I'd like to lean in on the past eight years of learning that I've gained from this community, and I'd like to give it back in a different light. When you're a department head, you take all the input and you solve problems, and I don't see being a council member being a whole lot different. Take input and solve problems. It comes down to that, you know, some may say, well, you haven't campaigned. That doesn't mean I have not been out in the community, especially in District 5, dealing with certain neighborhood associations and their issues with their pond or whatever it is. You know, we were stalling fiber throughout the city, and we had people that were hitting gas on it. You name it, I've been in our community. I've listened to our community. Ever since this vacancy was announced, it's not a true candidacy, it's not a run out and, you know, run a campaign, but it doesn't mean that I didn't go out and do my homework. We have a lot of tools that have been created. There's city surveys, getting out and talking with people. I think for me, thinking about District 5, I really want to focus on three really key areas. And that is public safety, which I don't think I need to really dive too deeply on how passionate I am about that. It's been my life for 23 years. A big one with the affordable housing, I think there's the other side of that, which is also economic development. We can't create more affordable housings. We can also raise the roof on what people are making and what businesses are here. My wife is a small business owner, I'm a small business owner, and I'm something that I'm really impassioned about, helping people find their dreams. And the last thing, just I think is something that, you know, talking with Shruti about how she won the election, I don't want to just come out with just my things because the community already decided what they wanted. So things that were important to her are important to me as well. You know, having that affordable childcare. I mean, I don't know how many of you have had to look for childcare, it was rough. When you talk about, you know, having people at the table, that's things I want to talk about. That's things that our district said are important. And then I think, you know, transparency and collaboration.
10 seconds.
That's really important. So with that, I'm going to finish up and let this move on so we can get some really good questions from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Courtney Daly.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Courtney Daly. I've lived in Bloomington for almost 14 years now. I am a mom to three quirky and amazing boys. My husband is a quirky and amazing public school teacher. He teaches theater at Bloomington North. I also have a theater background. So for theater nerds, the arts are very important to our family. Education is another one of our values. I have an education background as well. I am currently the Associate Director for Admissions with Kelly Direct Online MBA. But before that, I was an adjunct faculty member for Ivy Tech Bloomington and Kokomo, teaching online for several years. On the opposite end of the spectrum, I also taught nursery school and kindergarten for several years at St. Mark's here in Bloomington. And I brought that value of education into my volunteer work with the grassroots organization, Moms Demand Action. I led the local group here for three years, and I was consistently holding trainings for volunteers. And one of the trainings that I would hold, and I started actually giving it annually, and I still do hold it annually, is how to talk to your legislator. Because I was stunned and disheartened, really, to learn how many people are either uncomfortable, unwilling, or even unable to reach out to their legislators. And we can't have that. So I want to bridge that divide. I want to be a representative that our constituents know that they can come to. I want them to know that they can come to me, and they can ask me whatever questions they have and talk to me about their issues. And I will be their voice. That is something that is incredibly important to me. I've talked about other things that are important to me, arts and education, some other topics that I care very deeply about, access to mental health care. I promised somebody very close to me that I would be their representative to always ensure that people who need it and want it can have appropriate mental health care. Sustainability is very, very important also, of course. Equity is another topic that I am very passionate about. That goes back to being the voice for people, but it's also more than that. It goes beyond that. It is stepping aside and elevating their voices as well, making room for other voices within our community. And then, of course, public safety. You know, my 10 years advocating for common sense gun laws and all of that, I think proves that, you know, I'm also dedicated to public safety. So as passionate as I am about all of these issues, I also am willing and able to recognize that there's always more to learn about them. I am always learning, and I don't know everything there is to know about them. And I know you're probably shocked that somebody who wants to hold office is admitting that they don't know everything about everything. But I don't. And that helps me keep an open mind in approaching issues and knowing that there are other ways to look at these issues. And that I can be wrong sometimes, and I'll admit when I'm wrong, and I will work to fix my mistakes. So if I'm elected, I will respect and serve our community, and I will represent all of the people in District 5 to the best of my abilities, and I will represent all of Bloomington.
Thank you, Courtney. Ms. Stevens, Jenny Stevens.
Hi, excuse me. I'm Jenny Stevens. I'm running for District 5 City Council seat. I ran for the seat last spring, and in May, 930 of the citizens in District 5 voted for me because my issues resonated with them. I loved meeting my neighbors at their doors in their neighborhoods, listening to their concerns and their issues and their ideas for making Bloomington better. And so I am really invested in serving in a way I wasn't before because it feels personal now to me. It feels like I'm really representing them. The issues that I will work on as council person will be anything that comes before the city, and I will care about it, and I will work actively with the city council members, many of them who are here in the lobby today of the place. Anyways, but there are several issues that I really am focused on, that I really care about, that I heard at the doors, that I talked with the people. Affordable housing is a huge issue. People want to scale up, they want to scale down. Public safety is a big concern. We have openings in our police and fire departments that have been long-lasting. We are short nine dispatchers. People care about this. They want to feel safe in the community. Infrastructure is also a big concern. There's a lot of things that are happening around town. We are developing multimodal ways of transportation on sidewalks, streets, walking trails, biking trails, and this is an issue that has some residents concerned. When is it coming to my neighborhood? Why is it coming to my neighborhood? I'm hearing both sides of that fence. And I think that that's a really important thing. On my particular street, we had three sewer breaks, so I think we also need to be looking at our infrastructure in all of our older neighborhoods that's across the city. And I'm concerned with homelessness because in every neighborhood, I heard concerns and sympathy for the homeless in our community, and I want to work on that issue, too. My background is in leadership and management, in higher education, and in health care. I have held robust leadership positions where I am in charge of millions of dollars from multiple funding agencies. I'm developing budgets, I'm developing proposals, I am being the project manager. So that sensibility is what I want to do when I get on city council, is I want to bring that sensibility of how we really have to work on big things together and how we will have to work over years on these big things. My reputation is one of involving diverse views of people and a bunch of different educational levels, and when my work at IU is always involving experts in the matter. And I can bring everybody to the table and look for the commonality and move us forward to the goal attainment. In 1995, I came to the community for one year with my husband. We liked it so much, we decided to stay, and we have raised our three children here. At that time, I started working in the schools as a volunteer. I expanded that and worked in Boy Scouts, Oral Scouts, TEDx Bloomington, and I went through the Leadership Bloomington Monroe County Educational Course to learn more about the community. In 2018, I got my Master's in Educational Leadership because I loved the work I had done in schools, and I went and intentionally worked in high-poverty elementary so that I could see what poverty looked like in the lives of our children. As a council person, I promise you, I will use that as a metric in every decision I make to make sure we are advancing citizens' needs and the lives of our children and families. Finally, in 2010, I became active in politics. I volunteered to lead the school referendum. I organized an all-community campus of every single school district using volunteers, with a couple people you might know, Kathy Fuentes-Ror is one. And I discovered the power of working with individuals within the city, people who cared to advance that end issue. It passed, that referendum passed, we restored 59 positions to the school corporation, we eliminated very large-sized classrooms, and it is a commitment that I made to the committee, or to the community. It is the commitment I am making now. It is why I want to be your District 5 Leader on City Council, Jenny Stevens. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for opening statements. We will now move into a series of questions, again, collected from our precinct committee persons, residents in District 5, and on the topics that we had agreed to at the front end of the event. Let me sneak in here, foot down. Or, there you go, thanks. No, probably forgot, you're good. All right, first, just two general questions as we begin, and I'll start with Courtney Daly. What do you think is the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge that the city faces over the near term, one to two years, and medium term, three to five years? So short term and long term, greatest opportunity, greatest challenge?
So I think the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge are the same thing, and that is affordable housing. You know, I know that 2/3 of Bloomington is renters, and I also know that more than half of Monroe County is actually housing insecure. And that means that they are spending more than 30% of their income on rent. And that means that they are just one unexpected bill or a large payment away from losing the roof over their head. And that's not sustainable. That's not something that we can allow our community members to do. And so we need to step back and look, well, what can we do? Well, you know, we are building more apartments, but that's not, they're not affordable housing. And so another opportunity then is to look at what can we do? What kind of relationship can we build with the landlords to encourage more affordable housing? Unfortunately, our state legislature has determined that cities cannot control rent, so we have no opportunity to be able to do that. So we need to find some other incentives, working with landlords. We need to start building more affordable housing. Arlington Park was a good start. Hopefully that can stay affordable. And looking at, you know, what other incentives can we find within our community that would be able to bring some more affordable housing? And just, one of the things that I loved, that I looked at, was the tiny village idea. And then those are more...
10 seconds.
Thank you. Those are cheaper to build than multifamily homes, is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens.
I agree with Courtney, affordable housing is important, but I am actually concerned that we have poverty levels are growing in our community, so I do think we need to be looking at some economic development as a secondary issue. How that ties in with housing is we need workforce housing, so if we want to build economics and develop our community, we need to have places where people can live that they can afford. In the lives of our children, though, we need to look at our social service network. We need to look at things that are going on with our schools. We need to look at the wage in our communities and ways that we can incentivize businesses to grow and develop an economy and scale so that they can pay a living wage. So I think the issue is that we have to be aware of where we are thriving in the community and where we are not thriving. So housing is one issue, economic is another issue, and then I think public safety is another really critical issue because we are, we don't know how far away from some critical event where we don't have enough responders in our community to respond to a situation. Our public safety individuals are working a lot of overtime. That costs us, and it takes away from the opportunities we might have to work on affordable housing or childhood poverty. So we really do need to consider what we're doing with that particular situation as well. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
I think that's a great question. And when you think about, it's in terms of one to two years, some of the things that I think a lot of us are excited about is so much change, so many different councilors, so many new voices, a new mayor. That is a huge opportunity when you talk about mending bridges, working better together between city and county, just all of that is a huge opportunity. Some of the challenges, I think, are the things that we see every day. When I talk to people in District 5 and I look at the city surveys, there's a lot of concern over the housing issues that we're seeing. Talking with folks, it's not necessarily that they can't afford a house, it's, I've served the purpose of living in this house with my family. I'd like to downsize, but there's nowhere to go. I'm holding a house that someone else will probably appreciate more. In the next three to five years, I think that there's some really unique things that are happening. We have the new tech park, we have Oakwell, the whole Southwest proposed development, that's a ton of housing that could be created. But I do think that some of the bigger challenges are the ones that are harder. So the next three to five, I think you're looking at more of the health care, the social service, you know, the needs that are greater, but they also, if we can head them off now, would stop some of the continual decline in our community with issues like homelessness, with, you know, drug use. All of those things stem from not having the health care and mental health...
10 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll move into public safety questions, and this is from one of the precinct committee persons. At the city council's request, the city's Community Advisory on Public Safety, or CAPS Commission, have researched the best practice in progressive public safety policy, including non-police alternative response models, citing leading examples from cities around the country. Do you think Bloomington should move forward with non-police alternative response pilots or programs? Why or why not? That question goes first to Jenny Stevens.
Well, thank you for this question. I did attend on Wednesday a public safety conversation that the mayor had and city council members were there, and some stakeholders, fire police, and some people that have been looking at showers west. And I was heartened by this idea of non-police response as an alternative to response in our situations. I've worked with the special ed community in MCCSC. I'm realizing that there are individuals that look at life and situations very differently, and sometimes when they have an incident out in public, they don't need a police officer to come. That would actually accelerate the situation. They would do much better if they had a social worker or some trained de-escalation expert. It doesn't need a gun. It doesn't need to disrupt some of the valuable work that the police force might be doing. So I embrace this idea of alternative policing. I think we have to move into it carefully. I think it's a great vision and scope of, when we look at the whole national level of what's happening, where some people feel less safe with police. I don't know that that's happening here, but I think we need to be aware that when people encounter police here, they may respond to what they see at the national level, and that means we have to have a sensitivity that we maybe haven't had before in our policing. So I'm all for new visioning of how we deliver these services.
Thank you. Ms. Daly. We'll actually go back to Mr. Moore. We'll come back around.
Great, thank you. First, I think what's really important is I need to thank our police officers and firefighters. I've been on the front lines, I've worked with those people, seeing some of the things that they've been dealing with for years and years. But when it comes down to this CAPS Commission report, it's something I'm deeply familiar with. I helped create it. I've worked with those folks, answered the questions truthfully, and we had to face some really hard conclusions in that. When it comes to supporting it, I know it can't continue to happen the way it is. Status quo will not fix what's happening. It will not stop the burnout of our police officers or firefighters. It will not fix the escalation of all these issues. So I think there's some concerns of how it's been outlined is what needs to happen, but in principle, I agree that we need to do something different. Moving forward with the alternatives is something that I'm passionate about. There's things that firefighters and police officers shouldn't do, so that's why I helped create the Mullen Grade Health Care Program with the fire department. Civilian responders that don't need a badge, don't need a big red truck, don't cost taxpayers as much. I think there's plenty of solutions like that, and the one thing I want to say is, I also want to thank people who created the CAPS Commission report because it was a lot of really smart people in our community that helped create it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
I think first responders have the toughest jobs probably in our communities, and they are heroes every day. And I do think we need to lean into policing alternatives. You know, I know that Chief Decoff said the other night that they're already making some changes within the department to do so, but they are understaffed right now. And so I think if we can lean into some of those alternatives and bringing in more people to deal with, you know, mental health care crises, for example, is highly important because, first of all, police are not trained to be dealing with that. We need social workers, we need other specialist care providers who can be on the ground, and that will prevent further service calls coming into our already overworked dispatchers, too. And this takes some of the pressure as well off of our first responders, so that, you know, they are already understaffed as well. And so this will take some of the pressure off of what they're doing, and then they can focus on the more critical calls and the true emergencies that are facing them. You know, I always like to say that we need to be proactive and not reactive. And so the more that we can meet the needs of our community, the less that we will have to respond to crises like this. Then, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to a more of an intersectional question between these topics is the issue of homelessness in the community. And the next question will, let me go with this one here. This is from one of our precinct committee persons. How can the city address the current homeless crisis in the context of limited resources? Context of limited resources. I think we left off with, help me out. Or, Jason? Yeah. Mr. Moore.
Well, I think it really boils down to, no matter what we do, the city has priorities. I saw a lot of things, especially in District 5, where there's a lot of support for new programs, new solutions to help with the issue of homelessness. So I think, you know, as we move forward with limited resources, this has been identified. City survey, citywide, it is one of the bigger issues beyond affordable housing. So that means is the group that is out here, fiscal body, I used to always tell my folks at the fire department, if politicians support things, because that's where they put the money. I also know that our community is full of very wonderful groups that are working on these issues. So I don't know that this is solely just a city issue. I think this is how can the city better support all the people that are already the experts of doing this work? So moving forward, I think it's really boiling down to, where do we get the bit to bang for the buck? Where do we help the most people? Or where do we help the people that are deepest in crisis? And create new safety nets, because we cannot continually rely on number one as the bottom level safety net for everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Daly.
Well, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. Thank you. No, I absolutely agree. We have some excellent people in the community who are working on this issue, and while the city does need to work to address this, I think we can partner even further and encourage organizations such as Heading Home, Beacon, Shalom, you know, and help elevate our community family resources department, get everybody working together. These are the experts in the field, and we can do what we can to elevate them. Yeah, resources are limited, but it's about putting what we think is really important as a community first. And when you talk to people, you know, the unhoused issue is one of the most important issues that people often bring up. And so, again, it's meeting people, you know, and I think taking a housing-first approach is what we need to do because we cannot expect people to suddenly be able to get themselves into a home in... into a homing situation if we're not meeting their needs. So we need to focus on a housing-first approach.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Well, I agree with Courtney. The studies are in that indicate that housing first for homeless is a really good remedy to move them then into the services that they might need. In regard to homeless, we have to consider that individuals who are experiencing homelessness arrive at that destination from a lot of different paths. And so in order to help them out of that situation, if we can house them, that is ideal. But then we have to tie them to the services. We need to build robust partnerships with the county because the county has the public health department. Most people that are experiencing homelessness have public health issues. So we need to leverage the resources we have. The city is limited, but we can leverage the resources at the county. Heading Home is a great resource countywide to move people into permanent housing, but we have a little stopgap. And Shalom and Beacon will help that. But as a city councillor, I will support additional funding for the Jack Hopkins Service Center to rebuild and flush out our social service agencies, which are also always dealing with situations regarding homeless and other issues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's sit with housing a little bit here. And the question here comes from a precinct committee person as well. As one strategy to improve housing affordability, the city's comprehensive plan, and for those following along, that's Policy 5.1.3. There we go. He doesn't like a good joke. Calls for a diverse mix of housing types within neighborhoods, for example, missing middle housing types. Do you support allowing duplexes and triplexes in all residential areas? Why or why not? Courtney Daly, that question starts with you.
So I think that's a really good question that I would actually like to explore more. I know that there have been really big feelings about the idea of duplexes and triplexes within our community. I think that they can be effective in finding that, that middle housing ground. But I also know that some people have been very against it and worried about what it might do to neighborhoods. And so I think that it would be incumbent upon me as a representative for District Five to talk to the people who, who could tell us a little bit more about what kind of effects and research what that would mean for our communities. I would be open to the idea of exploring it.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens.
I am a duplex person. I married a person getting their PhD and so we moved around and we always ended up in duplexes and we always got these duplexes near and abutting a neighborhood because I so desperately wanted to be in the neighborhood. So I respect the issues that are around this. People in single-family resident homes are really worried that their home is going to get bought out by a developer, someone who's not of our community, and torn down and then a duplex is going to go in. So I think it would be lovely to have a model for how we approach any duplexes as they're coming up for development and look carefully at how we work that in with the neighborhood. Sycamore Knowles worked really well when they developed Renwick. And Sycamore Knowles neighborhood knew that Renwick was going to have some multi-use on that property and they did put duplexes and apartments there and they did put single-family homes there and some little shops. And Sycamore Knowles advocated as a neighborhood for increased park space. So there is a model for how we can develop duplexes while protecting single-family residents and homes and neighborhoods' identity by involving the neighborhoods that are near and abutting in any development that's happening close to them. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, so I think when you think about these issues, you know, we talked about getting out and talking to people. The city survey, and this is, this is one of the unique tools I love, right? It's scientific survey. Forty-one percent in District Five did not want density to increase. But also 32% thought that it was okay to put it throughout Wilmington. So what I see here is that there's a group of people that are kind of on both sides, but a lot of that can come down to what makes sense, the common sense approach. There are areas in the city where it absolutely does not make sense to increase density. The infrastructure can't handle it, the roads weren't designed for it. You know, you talk about taking over another chunk of property to increase a road size, that's not things that people go well with. But we also talked about filling sewer infrastructure and other issues. Let's put more capacity on things that weren't designed to handle it, we're going to have more problems. So I don't like giving blanket statements. I would say yes, I would support it where it makes sense, but I'd also think that this needs to be a huge outreach. A lot of the things I saw when I was in city government is people were just unaware, and unaware means afraid. And we don't want people to be scared that we're coming after their livelihood about their house or that. So talking to them, making sure that there is a plan, and then, yes, absolutely, we have to densify. We have a lot of issues, we talked about it, the affordable housing.
Ten seconds.
So you have to think about these as two sides of the same coin sometimes. And yes, in some places, I would definitely support it.
Thank you. We are flying through time and questions, but I want to make sure we get a variety of questions. And I'd like to move on to governmental operations and sort of culture at City Hall. And I have some questions I'm going to try to combine here on the fly, so bear with me. The first of those is this. There has been questions about government transparency, whether or not our city county or city government has been as transparent with citizens about decision-making, especially in neighborhoods regarding new development or revised development along green spaces and greenway. What's wrong with our current government transparency now in your opinion? And how would you go about improving it? I think we are now with Jenny, is that right?
Me? Yeah, all right. Well, thank you for this question. I, I am aware that we have just finished four years where government was not transparent. We had a lot of spaghetti thrown up against the wall and the community did not like it. The community wants to be involved. We have a new mayor who is articulating transparency and yet I cannot tell you who is on the showers west committee. I can't tell you who is on the Hopewell committee. I know that she has these committees, but they're not listed anywhere on the city website. So as a city representative, I would be asking for these things to be listed on the city website because if we're going to be transparent, we need to be transparent and we need to look at it in regard to, we're going to have a talk about this, we're going to invite you guys, we want your opinions, we're thinking about these things, we've got your opinions, we're regurgitating them back to you, we're kind of coalescing on where we're moving forward and then we make the plan together. In Cincinnati, they did that really well with the new fire department. And they got a Leeds Fire Department and they use it as a community center as well because they involve the people around them and that's how I would like to serve the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
I think this is a unique question. Anyone that's worked in government, no matter how hard you've tried, there's always the concern that you're not transparent enough. And I think some of that does boil down to that, yes, there's decisions that could be made more, more open, but communication really boils down to sender, receiver, medium, and message. And if there's a failure at any one of those stages, then it is not a good communication process. What I found interesting was 92% of District Five got their news about the city from word of mouth. That's, that's not an effective way of communicating all the time and that also leads to a lot of that telephone issue of the message changes. So I think moving forward, we need to start capitalizing on some of the lessons we learned from the pandemic about incorporating other areas of the community, getting it out. And if people really are relying on word of mouth, then they need to hear directly from those that have the insider knowledge, that are making the decisions. And that's where I would commit to making sure that we have, you know, meetings out in the community, meeting people where they're at. I can't expect everybody just to come to City Hall and I can't expect them to tune into the CATS or a live stream of what's going on. So I think it comes down to as elected officials, getting out, educating the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Daly.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. I think transparency is something that the community craves and thrives on. And so more open meetings, you know, to, to have the discussions, but to include the community within these discussions, right? But it's really intimidating for, you know, the average resident to decide they're going to go to a city meeting. It's not a welcoming space and a lot of people don't even know that the meetings are happening. And so we need to, yes, bring the issues to the community, but we need to do active outreach and invite people into our spaces, go into their spaces, make it a more welcoming presence, just make the entire process feel more understandable and clear to the residents and invite them to come along with us and have those conversations.
Thank you. All right. Second question on this sense of culture and the government operations. It's again combining on the fly in the interest of time. What has each of your past experiences prepared you for on taking on this role? And how do you plan on furthering this question and staying in touch with your constituents? What your past has prepared you for and how do you plan on staying in touch with constituents? I think we're back to, to Courtney? I think we're next.
Jason.
Jason, sorry, thank you. Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, great question. So past experience, that's, that's what my job's been. As an appointed official, it's not a lot different than an elected official. It's getting out, meeting with people. You know, when we talk about, you know, what have I done? Some things that I would want to carry forward. I published my city issued cell phone number. I didn't hide it. I will make sure the constituents have a number, have an email, and that for the one thing that I think is important, they will actually get a response. When I went out and I tried to talk to some of our council members and former council members, what, what worked for them, what did they find the best success? And that is it. Most people, when they send an email, they just want to be heard and they want to get a response. When people call, they want to talk to somebody. They don't want to just get an answering machine and then you never get back to them. When I think about moving forward, I will commit to having at least a monthly meeting. I think, you know, talking with some of the current council members, especially those at large, I love some of the things that I've seen where they're combining. It may be District Five and then they invite some of the at-large people that represent the entire city. I also think it's important to get into the groups, and this is where, you know, some of the things that she really ran on, is getting into the places that don't normally come. Being present at these civic events, being present at the other areas where people don't even know how to interface with the government. And that, for me, is where the key is. That's how you get true community participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Courtney?
So I've been a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for almost 10 years now. And I have learned a lot from my time leading this organization. For those of you who don't know what it is, we advocate for common sense gun policies. We support the Second Amendment. And we also believe that we can reduce the epidemic of gun violence. And so how does that prepare me for this role? Well, that's a pretty controversial thing that I'm advocating for in Indiana, especially with our super majority in the State House. But I am well seasoned in going toe-to-toe with the representatives at the State House who are diametrically opposed to everything that I am advocating for. And so I have learned that maybe when things don't go my way, I can step back and recalibrate and keep advocating. So I've learned how to advocate for important issues. I've also learned how to listen very closely to these important issues and to find what people are really saying when they're telling me that they oppose what I am advocating for. I've also learned so much about leadership. I learned about budgeting. I learned about advocating and also involving people in the process. I know I mentioned this earlier, but our organization thrives on volunteerism. And so recruiting people to get activated and to join us and to come in and join us in the movement is something that I was very skilled at.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. In terms of preparation, I have really robust, multi-budget, multi-project, concurrent project experience under my belt with state, federal, multiple funders, so lots of regulations deep. So I've learned, I've learned to work in a giant bureaucracy. And you know what? The city is a giant bureaucracy and it has links to the county government, it has things happening at the state level, and then we have our, our local situation. So, and, and we want to build out relationships with social services and with the school system and with the hospital and with the university. I am skilled at that. That's what I would like to do as your representative. In terms of staying in touch with the residents, I've already been to some of the residential meetings, the Neighborhood Association meetings. I'm hoping to be on their listserv so that I can see in real time what's happening in their neighborhoods. I'm hoping that when they have a summer event, a picnic, that I get invited and then I will attend and get to know them firsthand and share their lives and their experience of living in their neighborhoods. And through the Hand Association, if there are neighborhoods that don't have an association, I want to be able to give them some resources and help them to build up, build up their neighborhood association. Because sometimes we have associations that are, we have neighborhoods that are mainly renters and it would be really good for them to feel very connected to their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for, I think, two more and then we're on to closing statements. So the next question, again, addresses some of the culture with the city council. Trudy Rana made history as the council majority, bringing the council majority into a 5'4" female majority. And of course, was also the first woman of color elected to the city council. How important is this representation in the council and how will you find ways to promote that representation moving forward should you be selected to fill the seat? And I think we are, to Courtney, thank you.
I'm really glad to talk about this because as I stated in my opening statements, equity and inclusion is incredibly important to me. I think we need to be very intentional in how we approach issues and how we approach our communities. Again, it's about getting out into the community and inviting people to have conversations with us. You know, we need to make space for people who think differently from us and who approach things differently from us and of course, who just come from very different backgrounds than us. And we have to be mindful that other people have different perspectives from us and that everybody has a very different lived background and experience. And so we need to be inclusive. And just like I was saying earlier, it's about making them feel welcome in spaces where they may not see themselves represented. So that means going to them, getting more involved in some of their neighborhoods and some of their organizations and associations.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you for this question. I don't think any of us can legitimately replace Trudy. We are three white people up here, for one thing. But in terms of the issues that she cared about, I care about them too. The issue of access to healthcare, the issue of childhood education, early childhood education, and the issue of transparency and building businesses were things she was advocating for specifically. And I care about that. In regard to, what was the rest of the question? Sorry, I've lost it.
How would you work to continue that?
Oh, so I will continue that representative, representation because I agree with all the things. But in terms of equity, I worked on a lot of MCCSC school corporation committees as a parent and community representative. And I walked in with a bullseye on my back because I represented parents' issues. And when I was doing that work on longer school day and calendar committee and a few other things, I would potentially go out to Wonder Lab and I'd ask all the parents I saw. I would go to the grocery store and I might have a conversation. So I'm used to already going into other spaces to ask for input for people that aren't at that table with me. When MCCSS has their conversation this week about the school calendar, not the school calendar, this, the migration of Templeton and Childs, I will purposely go to Templeton because that has been a marginalized community in this conversation, inappropriately identified as high poverty as they're identifying feature, which is unfair. Thank you.
Jason?
I think this is a really unique question for our community that celebrates diversity. When I think about it, you know, you have to talk to the people that helped elect Trudy. She tapped into portions of the community that had never historically voted in local elections. It's important for me, and that's why when she first announced she was leaving, I reached out, because I wanted to figure out how. I also don't like to be the one that sits here and talks about it because I'd rather do something about it. And when you think about my past history, I could talk about it all day long, but tripled the diversity of the department over the past eight years. That was actively seeking out barriers. That was finding the diversity within our community and promoting them to be where they should be. I think that the diversity, equity, inclusion portion of this is huge. I will never replace the historic figure that was elected into the position. But I can continue on the legacy work that she began. I can continue to work with someone that is vested in this community. I can also continue, like I've already been doing, meeting with the people that actually voted her into this office. That's something that I'm committed to. She worked with underrepresented groups to get them to vote and she promised them a voice. I've already been meeting with them and I will commit to continue to meet with them because that's what got her elected to that position. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last question is a, I want to try to do three, confuse everybody, we'll see how we do, and then we'll move on to closing statements. So the question is a little like this. What is an example of an issue that we haven't talked about today that is clearly within the jurisdiction or the authority of the common council? Have you discussed this with current members? And what would you do to build consensus and use the power of your office to address that issue? So what haven't we talked about? Have you talked about it with others? And what will you do to try to? And what will you do to try to answer that question? Jenny?
Can you ask that?
Yeah, I'll do it one more time. What's an example of an issue we haven't talked about that's within the jurisdiction of the council? Have you talked about that issue with other members? And what would you do to build consensus to address that issue?
Who are the other members?
Of the current city council.
Oh, okay. I repeated again, sorry.
One more time. That's good. I almost got memorized. What is the example of an issue we have not discussed that is clearly within the jurisdiction of the common council? Have you discussed that issue with other current members of council? And what would you do to build consensus on that issue?
I've been having a lot of conversations, so this is actually a very difficult question to answer. But if it's an important issue, I think an issue we haven't discussed robustly has to do with our own economy. I don't know that I've discussed this with city council exactly, but I attended a city council meeting where they were talking about the convention center. And in within that conversation, they were literally discussing the downtown and the vibrancy of the downtown and the fact that we're losing ground on our downtown businesses and how the convention center would interact and possibly strengthen our community, bring people into our community who then might want to come back and be students here, who might want to come back and live here. And I think it's a very important thing for us to think about how we want to grow our community, how we want to identify the quality of life for our current residents, how we bring everybody to the table around that issue. It's kind of seen in the viewpoint of when you're looking at building a convention center, but exactly how the community is going to interact with that convention center, not just for other people to come and visit our community, but then how are we going to interact with that convention center as well, and how are we going to build out our businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney. I'm sorry, Jason, I keep doing that. I want to go back down. That's my fault. Thank you, Jason.
So I think what's interesting about this question is things that we haven't already discussed. We've talked about really important things. I think one thing that we didn't really address that's kind of in the wheelhouse between city and county a little bit is the criminal justice reform. We've got a failing jail. We've got a jail that needs to be replaced. This is going to affect everybody because it has to be a project that we all get involved with and behind. To do it, it's not just a building. And I think when you look at, you know, the community, criminal justice reform, this is going to take all hands. All of us are going to have to do that outreach, that education with our constituents. We cannot just rely on the county commissioner, county council. They're just a few people. They have their following, they have their constituents. But if we maximize some of those things, we bring it down to a granular level, bring it down to our district, hear them out, hear their issues, and maybe even do that educational aspect of, this is really important. So when it comes to consensus, it comes down to educating and getting people involved in it. Again, fear is comes from the unknown. Making people understand how bad it is, what needs to be done, what it's going to cost if we are truly going to care about it, I think those are important things. And consensus comes from bringing those people together, finding the common ground, and making sure that we can all agree, at least in principle, in the direction we're heading.
Thank you.
One of the issues that we haven't discussed today, but it's related to the unhoused population and also the mental health crisis that we've talked about, is addiction and substance abuse and the recovery process involved with that. You know, I'm very, very interested in exploring the new integrated, I'm going to learn how to speak. Integrated reentry and correctional services peer-to-peer support program that is now being looked at in Monroe County. I think that's something that could be tremendous in association with the Indiana Alliance for Recovery. And so I think, you know, being able to kind of find consensus on supporting those issues. You know, it's a lot about, like what Jason was saying about, you know, people are scared of what they don't know about. And so this is a marginalized community who really need our help because when they're not getting our help, well, then that's just committing to more, contributing to more mental health crises and the unhoused population. And so being able to look into those policies and getting people to understand how all of those threads are really interconnected, we can kind of start to untangle them and work to solve some of these problems.
Thank you. All right, we're on to closing statements. Jenny had the last, Jason, you've got the first, you had the last first question. Yeah. So Jason, go back to the beginning with you, and go ahead with your two minutes to close off. Thank you.
Great. Well, first, again, thank you all for being here. This is entirely educational because your questions are things that are important to you. Specifically to the precinct chairs in the room, I understand this is a cave process. This isn't the way we want to do it. I want to very directly ask for your support and your vote. When it comes down to our community, I think I have a proven history. I have something that is unique in the fact that I've worked in the government, I have in-depth knowledge. We're talking about coming in midterm, right before budget, the up cycle for me and the intake and the having to learn. I'm not going to say there's not a lot to learn. I have a lot to learn every day. In fact, that's my goal, learn something new every day, right? But when we talk about the actual job of being a city council member, I have a lot of experience that will translate directly into being able to get to work right away. I have the community connections, I have a lot of things, the tangible and non-tangible benefits that will allow me to serve you better. I also think, moving forward, that it's important for you to understand that I'm committed. I gave up a career I loved so that I could stay here. And I'm not asking for pats on the back. I did it because I love it, my family loves it, and for once, we have a home. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
I just want to thank everybody also for being here today. I really do appreciate everybody's support. David Henry, I want to thank for moderating. This was great fun. And I want to thank my co-candidates with me, so that especially so that I don't have to sit up here alone, so I appreciate your company. But I appreciate both of you. You know, I want to tell you, Jason, that I appreciate your service to our country and to our city and for your tenure as fire chief. Jenny, I appreciate all of the campaigning and door knocking you did and your tremendous involvement in the community, especially in supporting MCCSC schools. I think we are three very competent and well-qualified candidates up here together. What sets me apart, I believe, is that I have almost a decade of experience in sitting down and talking with people who not only do I not see eye to eye with, but sometimes I really don't see eye to eye with. And I'm used to having those really hard conversations and keeping at it and not giving up just because it feels like we don't see where we can find a common ground. And then there is always a common ground that we can find. And that is the very first step to be able to move forward together on a very difficult issue. I know how I will conduct myself as a council member. I am a, I will be a learner and a listener. And so I would be honored to earn your trust and to serve as district councilperson for, councilperson for District Five. I am very committed. When I commit to something, I am very passionate about it. And I think 10 years of advocating for common sense gun laws in Indiana proves just how tenacious and determined I can be. I don't give up, and I keep going. And so that passion will then also translate into so many of the issues that we talked about here today that is important to all three of us and all of you sitting up here. But most importantly, I'm a team player. And I'm sorry, I'm going to be super cheesy here. Wilmington is our team. So, sorry. So I told you it's important to me. I want to hear what's important to you.
Thank you. Jenny Stevens.
I came in 1995, and I thought I was going to stay here a year. And at the end of the year, my husband said, well, I think I should go out and do a postdoc someplace. And I said, well, you should do it now because if you don't do it, I will never want to leave. I have found a place that resonates with me. And I have, every year that I've been here, invested in the community, first in the schools. And then, as I saw other issues or other situations, I invested more. I am doing, pursuing this position because, believe it or not, I used to read city and county budgets for fun. I'm totally enthralled with operations and big operations and how you move things and how you set the stage for an idea to develop, and it takes years. At IU, when I left, and I started as an hourly person, I left them five policies that they didn't have. At one point, they said, who is she? That she could even ask this idea. But they were really relevant policies, and they really advanced the research. So I'm bringing robust budgeting, planning, a heart full of ideas and aspirations for our city, a curiosity, and a just wonderful idea that this could be the best thing I would ever do in my life and the most interesting work I would ever take up. So I'm Jenny Stevens, hoping for your support on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our candidate forum. Please join me in giving a round of applause for candidates.